Okay, could I have a motion to reconvene?
Caucus meeting. Motion to reconvene.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll salute the flag now.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item tonight is we're appointing our town historian.
Okay, resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing John Parker as the local town historian. We've been asked by the county of Ocean Heritage and Cultural Society to appoint a town historian. There is in New Jersey statute that allows for a township to appoint a historian. And after much talk among the committee, they would like it to be Mr. Parker, since he is the one that has the most knowledge about our community. Mayor, next.
Would you like to read the resolution?
Oh, if you'd like me to, I surely will. In accordance with New Jersey state statute, the governing body may establish the position of local historian. Whereas the governing body, in cooperation with the Ocean County Cultural and Heritage Commission, desires to appoint a member of the community as the local historian. Whereas the governing body, after careful consideration, felt the only person that is knowledgeable in the history of our community is John C. Parker. Whereas John C. Parker throughout his lifetime has shared his knowledge of the township with the Lacey Historical Society and the youth in our schools. Whereas the township committee desires to appoint John C. Parker as local historian for the township of Lacey. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and township committee, the township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, as follows. That the mayor and township committee do hereby appoint John Parker as the local historian for the township of Lacey. Said appointment shall be made annually at the township's reorganization meeting. And a certified copy shall be forwarded to the Ocean County Cultural and Heritage Commission. Mr. Parker, why don't you step on up?
Why not, John?
He's still hanging in the wall, like you want me to...
Yeah.
John, you have more knowledge than standing anybody, and we couldn't pick a better person. And certainly, we wanted you to get out there and talk to some of the newer members up here. You really need to know, talking about Lacey Township, which we do appreciate. It's my honor to present you with this.
Thank you.
Or anything for everything. I'm gonna ask your family to come up here, because we're gonna get a picture, John.
Yes.
You brought the dog crap in. You guys will come on back.
Yeah.
Let's get one of your pictures. You gotta get the slide, you know.
Right over here.
Sitting right here.
Come on back, guys. Virginia, go over there. Miss, here's my... Come on, sit, you go over there.
Thank you very much, John.
Is it just you and your family?
Yes.
Mayor.
I got hot in my head again.
Can you like, move your slide down, we got so many people that...
No, I'm hot in my head. He's not the best photographer, just saw him for a little bit.
John, would you like to say a few words?
Sure he would.
Wow!
I sure he would.
I know he's a real...
Just give you a quick little history lesson.
Speaking of history...
Just pull that mic over, so the people at home can...
Yeah, why I'm here.
Thanks, John.
Years ago, the freed... or border freeholders, I guess I had to thank those boys first. And they put me on the Ocean County Historic Society. Of course, they had monetary problems, so they always come looking for me. And I served on there until I got them out of financial trouble. So that was the start of it. And then when they formed the Cultural Heritage Commission, which they formed to protect and preserve the history of Ocean County, certain street municipalities and subdivisions. And then each subdivision was supposed to pick out someone and do something about history. So they... I've always been friends with the freeholders, you know, for many, many years. So they sent down word to you people. And I want to take the opportunity to thank all of you, because this is... at my stage in life, it's kind of an honor for me. And I love history, so you boys know that. And this is something very nice, and I thank the border freeholders for recommending me. And I thank you boys for going along and appointing me to this position. And I guess, of course, my wife isn't here anymore, I should thank her for putting up a little my town set. But she knows all about that. And I, and my three kids and their grandchildren and my grandchildren, and they've had a ride with their grandpa and father, that's for sure. And I do love it, and you know, I've served with you, you understand where I come from. But not to belabor this, because it is, remember I used to say, "It's football, boys." Let's come short, football, you know. Thank you all, and glad to see you, I haven't seen you in quite a while.
Thank you, nice to see you too.
Yeah. And I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to... Hey, it's Lacey Township. To give you a quick history lesson. My father's people is 1687, right here in Fort Huron. And my mother's people in Ware Town, 1795. So we've been around, kicking around here for a long time. So thank you all.
Thanks. Before we have a motion... Not yet, because I know that there's a few committee members that want to say a few words, so sit and relax for a second. First, I need a motion on the resolution.
Move it.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Who seconded that? Mr. Curatolo? Yes, Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
And Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Mr. Dykoff?
John, it's good to see you back here. Really, really is. Seems like old times. I, you know, I... It's funny, I talk like you a lot now. Little bit of history, just had this conversation. I know the history, and I learned a lot of it from you. And some bit, you know, a little colorful, some a little twisted, but it's still history. We can't think of any person better than you, and every time we talk about this, you're the only name that comes up. And I want to congratulate you, congratulate your family. And the Parker's been kicking around a long time, and I know they'll be kicking around a long time from here, and I hope you're around too. Thank you very much, John.
Steven?
Yeah, John, it's a huge honor for the town for you to be historian. You sort of gave me my start in politics when you put me on the zoning board, well, many, many years ago, so I deeply thank you for that. And I tell everybody, a couple months ago, at the Republican Club meeting, you gave the greatest speech I've ever heard at local politics, at the Republican Club meeting. So thanks a lot, John, thanks for everything.
Nicky?
John, I never got to serve with you up here. I think I wish I did, but your knowledge is far beyond. I talk to Casey all the time about it. I appreciate everything you've done for Lacey Township, and I hope that I can be a third of the man in what you've done for this township. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you, and congratulations, you well deserve, no doubt about it, Mr. Parker. Definitely, thank you.
And Peter?
Well, Mr. Parker, it's an honor. I've never heard anyone refer to the board of chosen freeholders as "boys" and have it be a compliment. And so, I'm jealous of you, I know I can't do that. And I'm many years away from ever being... No, I would never do that. They say never, say never in politics. I'm gonna say never. I mean, you're the town father. You talked about history. I often reference my grandfather when I talk, when your name was brought up. You remind me a lot of him, and I think that matters. I hope that you spread the history of this town to our schools and let these, the young people know it, and then they'll grow, and then they'll pass it on. So it's a really important position that you have. A tremendous amount of respect for you, and I hope you're here with us in this position for many, many years. Thank you.
And John, we go back quite a few years, you and I have worked together on a lot. We've agreed, we've disagreed, but you know, I've always had the utmost respect for you. You've brought so much to the table, you've done so much for the township itself, and there's nobody that I could imagine serving in this position, you know, with the history of the township, the knowledge that you have. You're gonna have to train Casey or Cindy now, or you know, one of the other kids to have all that knowledge in years to come, because it's something that people have to know, where this town came from, what has happened over the years. And you're the voice now to tell, get out and tell people that stuff. I know you love being around the kids, and I think if you don't get hold of the schools, I'll sign you up for every career day and every event coming up next twelve months, so that the kids can really learn a little bit more about the town itself. So thank you to you, to your family, you know, all the time. I know it's taken a lot of time away from the family over the years, all John's time dedication to the community. But you've always had Lacey Township first, I'm part of, so we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Before you leave, we have one more add-on. Doreen Smolins is gonna come up and present us with a flag, I believe.
Good evening, township. My daughter, a veteran of the United States Marine Corps, had a flag flown on USS Missouri in my honor last Christmas. I'd like to present it to the town as their early Christmas gift, as a Veterans Day gift. And to our township, from the USS Missouri, played a crucial and unforgettable role in defense of America for three wars spanning for more than four decades. Battleship supported America's military forces in the Gulf Wars in 1991. USS Missouri played in American's history was forever immortalized as the site of September 2nd, 1945, signing as the instrumental of surrendering, ending the war, World War II. This flag was flown on the fandail of USS Missouri from January through June of 2003. I'd like to present it to the township in our honor. From our veterans, this is their town, it will always be our town.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, Doreen, on behalf of the committee, as well, your daughter, we extend our thanks to her.
Well, that wall, our wall, was built on her behalf and for all our veterans.
And that was my next comment. For those that are here tonight, and those watching at home that don't know, Doreen is responsible for the Freedom Wall we have out here in front of Bicentennial Park.
It's still expanded.
You know, you've been working on it for years, and I know you're always reaching out to get vets' names and add to the wall itself, and you've done a tremendous job in what you've accomplished out there.
And this was her gift too, to present to the town, this is her town. She has traveled the world, she has served in Afghanistan, she has traveled the world.
That's fantastic.
And this is home, Lacey Township, and you can look, flag flown here, and just present it here.
Yeah, and on behalf...
I'm really sure how you preserve it.
I think we're gonna preserve it very similar to the one that's on the law there.
We'll actually put it in that, and the money will come out of the wall, however we have to do this.
We'll take care of it, we'll... Casey will do a great job with it.
But please, thank your daughter for her service as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Before you sit down, Mayor, can you just have her old kid in that, so we can get a better picture?
Get down there, go down.
Stand up in between us.
Now you can go home and watch football.
John, thanks. Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So they're coming next meeting, unless...
Okay, item number three is gonna be carried. The Lacey Elks Lodge will be here at our next meeting to present the presentation of the deputy fourth. So item number four, one-day social affairs permit, Lacey Elks, December 12th, 2015, and Lacey Elks, December 31st, 2015.
I just need a motion to approve their one-day social affairs permits for myself and the chief to sign them.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, item number five, permission to post signs for the Lacey Girls softball.
They're having their annual registrations, they're looking to post signs. Actually, it will be starting Saturday through the following Saturday, so...
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that is it, and we do not need to go into executive session, because we had started that earlier this evening.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gonna jump into our regular meeting. At our notice of this meeting, it's been given the influence of the Open Public Meeting Act since the public laws of 1975. Said notices advertising the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon was posted on the Volta Board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're gonna begin with a salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, resolution 2015-268, appointing winter seasonal laborers.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the employment of snow season laborers for the Department of Public Works. These are the young men that work over the summer season for us. We bring them back to help them shovel the snow at the public buildings during the winter season, and they're only on an as-needed basis if we get snow, so I'm hoping for no snow. And then, of course, we bring back a few of our retired truck drivers to help us plow the many roadways and streets.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number two, resolution 2015-269, authorizing dedication by rider.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, requesting approval of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to establish a dedication by rider for accumulated absences liability trust fund required by New Jersey Administrative Code 5.30-15. This is a requirement by the state of New Jersey with regards to the pay expenditures of accumulated absences liabilities.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number three, resolution 2015-270, placing a lien on block 1024.25, lot 25.14 for property maintenance.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1724 Longwood Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. Total amount is $93.17.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number four, resolution 2015-271, placing a lien on block 101.12, lot 38, for property maintenance.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1016 Orlando Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost, the amount of $113.99.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number five, resolution 2015-272, placing a lien on block 208, lot 8, for property maintenance.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1713 Compass Drive, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost, the amount of $111.87.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number six, resolution 2015-273, authorizing release for performance and maintenance bond for block 314.01, lot 29.04.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance and maintenance guarantee posted for block 314.01, lot 29.04. This is the, for T-Mobile Northeast, this was the cell tower that got put in over by the Home Depot site.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number seven, resolution 2015-274, authorizing release for performance bond for block 225, lots 18 and 19.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance guarantee posted by George McCree upon the posting of a maintenance guarantee for block 225, lots 18 and 19. This is the corner of Lakeside Drive and Route 9. It has made, completed its performance, now will be on maintenance for two years.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number eight, resolution 2015-275, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for block 225, lot 17.01 and 17.04.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a site improvement maintenance guarantee for block 225, lots 17.01 through 17.04. This is on the back site of the Applebee's Plaza. We are releasing a portion of the maintenance bonds on the public improvements.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Yes, item number nine, resolution 2015-276, authorizing the release of deposit monies.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 10, resolution 2015-277, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $5,413,473.23.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes, item number 11, monthly reports.
Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of October collected receipts in the amount of $8,335.53. Tax collector for the month of October collected receipts in the amount of $562,564.35. For the month of October, the Department of Public Works for road opening permits collected receipts in the amount of $81,181.65. Most of these have been New Jersey natural gas blanket permits for various changes that New Jersey Gas is making throughout the community. Recycling commodities were collected in the amount of $641. Treasurer's, the municipal court report for the month of September was collected in the amount of $26,657.50. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 12, motion to approve township meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2015.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 13, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2015.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 14, motion to approve rapid license application for the Region 6 NJ SNA BPOE Lacey Elks Lodge 2518 and Lacey Township High School Booster Association.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Add-ons?
Yes, I do, I have two add-ons. Versus resolution 278, it's a resolution to township Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the change of certain street names in accordance with the filed subdivision maps. This is being requested by the New Jersey HMFA Mortgage Company, based on the project that we're doing with Walters Development Group for the Lacey Family Apartments. When they had first made application, we were using the street address of 916 Lacey Road. But since then, as you know, that we've all changed that to be Gary Smith Way. So they just need a resolution formalizing from the governing body that we've changed the street name and the house number to 900 Gary Smith Way versus 916 Lacey Road.
Move it. Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
The next one is resolution 279, resolution to the township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of diesel fuel to Regans Incorporated. This is the Stafford Township Cooperative Pricing System that we belong to. The contract has expired, Stafford just sent us all the paperwork today. This is a two-year contract for diesel fuel to Regans, so can I have a motion on that?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
That is all I have to add on.
Okay, comments in the committee, Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, Mayor Quinn. I think, first and foremost, it's very important to recognize our veterans. We had our Veterans Day ceremony yesterday at our bicentennial park. One of our more active veterans from the commission is here tonight, Mr. Moss. Mr. Moss has furnished me with this packet, I'd like to hold it up for the camera if I could. It's a packet containing a lot of information, how a bill becomes law, different stickers, pledge of allegiance, pro-American literature. It's given each year, courtesy of the American Legion 517 and the Veterans Commission, to different schools, to go into these schools and just tell of our history. It's important to cultivate those roots, much like what my own personal feeling, like what I had said to Mr. Parker, to grow the love for our country, and for the young people to learn the history of our country, to have an appreciation for our country. I thank the veterans not only for their service, but for their proactivity for what they've done in our schools here, and what they've done long before I was fortunate enough to be elected to this board. So I want to thank you publicly, Mr. Moss, Mr. Snyder, our chairman, Bernie Snyder, our commander, Roy Johnson. I thank any of our people that are here, our folks, our townspeople, our neighbors. Please feel free to come up and look at this, this is something that we have several of our schools receive at no cost to our schools, and it's just an outstanding piece to go to our young children, and it's very important, especially on, excuse me, Veterans Day. I'd also like to touch on a couple of points now, if I could. As I have set up here on this dais in the past, I'm very proud of our police department. I think they're very progressive, they dovetail education and enforcement. Been appraised by our chief in the last two and a half years. And these are some of the positive things that I want our townspeople to know, where their money's going, and the fiscal responsibility that our department heads and the municipal side have and demonstrate each and every year. The Lacey Township Police Site, in the last website, in the last two and a half years, has received over 1 million hits. I think that's an unbelievable statistic for a town of just a fraction, a small fraction of a million people. We have over 1 million hits. Our chief, tomorrow, our chief does have his doctorate degree tomorrow, he is gonna be presenting a 45-minute presentation called "The Impact of Social Media on Illegal Drug Use Among Teens." Because of his credentials, and the credentials of the other presenters, people that attend, which there'll be approximately 160, will be able to get continuing education credits. On the fiscal side, $7,500 grant for drive sober or get pulled over. In the last two years, applied for and received $100,000 in grant money to support the police budget. Grants received for equipment, over $54,000. For enforcement, $46,000. More than $30,000 in criminal forfeiture monies for purchases and equipment. This is in the last two years from our police department. I think our police department is out there, they're active, they're talking to our kids, they're doing the good, the heavy work, the prevention efforts in our high school. And I just want to recognize some of those efforts. Would also like to, at this time, recognize just some of the programs that are going on in our rec department. And I think my colleague, Committeeman Giuliano, is gonna talk a little bit about the Michael Davidson Foundation and Meadowlark Park. So along with that, to dovetail with that, there's an ROID grant, and that's recreational opportunities for adults. We have here a $9,600 grant that was applied for and received through our recreation department. And that takes place at our library, and since 2011, over $90,000 in grants our rec department has applied for and received. So when you, again, I think when you talk about fiscal, and these are just two of our departments, it goes on and on down the list. So, I mean, the fiscal responsibility on the municipal side, something I'm very, very proud of, budgeting is not an easy thing to do. Our department heads are in it, they're in the thick of it every day. We trust them to do that. I trust them, and I think they do an outstanding job. And I'll close with thanking Heather Scanlon of the Municipal Alliance. On October 30th, she had a wonderful luncheon. Each last Friday in October, she has approximately 100 people. One of my colleagues in the county, from the prosecutor's office, spoke on alcohol and drug abuse and addiction, was very informative. So again, another part of our department that is robust, active in our community. And I just want our people that may commute up north, that may commute down south, out west, to know what some of these activities are, that they're here, and that their money is being spent in what I think is a very, very responsible ways. I'll close with those comments, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Nick?
As Committeeman Curatolo touched on, we, I have the pictures here, if anybody really wants to take a look at them right after we're done, I'll leave them right out on the table at Meadowlark Park. I'll read you a little bit of what we wrote about it. "I am pleased to inform you that the installation of the Totlot Playground Equipment at the Meadowlark Beach Play Area is now complete. I have attached pictures of the finished project for your reference. Please be advised that the project was made possible by a generous donation from the Michael Allen Davidson Foundation. I have attached a copy of the MAD nine eleven foundation mission statement. In addition, the new sign having a six hundred dollar value located in the Meadowlark Play Area was fabricated and donated by our vendor Garden State Highway Products Incorporated by the Vice President Robert A. Green." First, the Michael Allen Davis Foundation, this playground was donated by MAD, M-A-D nine eleven, in memory of Michael and the over three thousand lives lost on that dreadful day, as well as to the honor of those men and women protecting our freedoms. The foundation was established not only to remember our lost one, but to try to prevent further tragedies through education, understanding, and love. We hope to change attitudes and acceptance with knowledge of diversity tolerance. Who was Michael Davidson? Michael was a son, a brother, a grandson, a friend. At only twenty-seven, he had a remarkable way of understanding life. He cared not only about himself, but others around him, symbolizing family and what a friend should be. Mission statement, the MAD nine eleven foundation will address the need for social, economic, and religious tolerance through the education of our youth, coupled by the restoring of recreation facilities in remembrance of those lost. Like I said, I'll leave the pictures up on the front table so everybody can see the finished product. Another thing that I'd like to touch on is, I read this and it touched me a little bit because we have a high school student in town that is battling a rare form of cancer. I hate hearing that because I've gone through it personally with my family, so it's really hard, but I'm going to read this. It's Carolyn for McKenzie. It's November twenty-ninth. It's four to five P.M. It's at twelve thirty-one Taylor Lane, Forkett River. That is her house. McKenzie Humke, a beautiful high school student, has a rare form of cancer, has been on quite a journey with her family by her side. Joining Lacy Kids for a Cure and bringing in the Christmas spirit with the Humke family on their own front lawn the Sunday after Thanksgiving. Let's gather as a community to make a difference. We will sing Christmas carols, serve some hot chocolate, and have a balloon launch for McKenzie. There may be even a surprise guest. Many donations to assist with the medical costs will be separately accepted. For further inquiries, you can call six oh nine, three eight nine, three four six nine. And you can reach it on Facebook, W-W dot Facebook dot com, McKenzie Smile. My last thing I have, Mayor, is also this Saturday, November fifteenth, in South Tom River at Mathis Park, they have the dedication of the submarine. I thought that was pretty.
Saturday?
It's Saturday, November fifteenth.
Well, the fifteenth is Sunday, the fourteenth is Saturday.
Is it really?
Yeah.
You told me? It's Saturday, I know that. Definitely Saturday. So what date is that?
The fourteenth.
Fourteen.
We just want to get this right.
Okay, but it's ten thirty in South Tom River. It's limited. I don't know if you know where Mathis Park is there. It's right before Huddy Park on the right-hand side. Am I right, Mr. Moss? Is that where?
Take Route nine on to the gray building, one of those who come to South Tom, South River.
The old marina there, it's right past that.
Where the big boat, where the big boat is.
Mm-hmm. Right.
River ladies.
Where the river ladies, right before that, before Huddy Park is Mathis Park. I'd like to see everybody show up for that, please. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ken?
Thank you, Gary. I'd like to congratulate Gary on his reelection to the Township Committee and also to Tim McDonald on his election. I can't say enough about Gary and Tim will make an excellent addition to the board. I would also like to congratulate Rob Claus and Dave Salati on their election to the school board. Hopefully they bring new energy and new ideas. I would also like to recognize the other candidates who ran for election, Barry Bender and Greg Panza, Helen Dela Cruz and Mike Dos Santos all ran for committee, Jim Latelier and Gary Vicaro ran for school board. I would hope that they would all stay active in township politics. And finally, a heartfelt thanks to all the men and women in our armed forces in recognition of Veterans Day. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Mark?
As everyone has said, this past week is Veterans Day, very solid event. Once again, veterans came out and members of the Township Committee to honor the veterans at our bicentennial wall outside. Can't say enough. We see them every day. I work for Motive Eagle and it's very nice. We have a veterans designation sticker that we can put on a veteran's license to honor them and show that they are a veteran. And we make it a point when someone comes into the agency to get a veteran sticker, my staff always makes it a point to say, "Thank you for your service." So I say, "Thank you for your service." As we said, I want to congratulate Gary and Tim on their election. I know, I know Gary will continue to do a good job and I, and I know Tim will do a great job joining this, this great committee. This is my last year. Got three meetings left, actually two after tonight. And, and I, I'll, I'll talk about this as, you know, it gets closer, which coming pretty close, but I have mixed emotions. I will miss it, but I know the Township Committee is in good hands with the gentleman and lady up here who will continue to do everything in their power to make this township great. Congratulations to Rob Claus and Dave Salati. And as Mr. Kennis said, I know they'll bring new and good energy to the, the school board and thank all the candidates for putting their time. It's not an easy thing. I was very happy not having to do it this year. But as I said, stay involved. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thanks, Mark. Not, not to sound repetitive, but again, Veterans Day was yesterday. It was a, you know, it's a very, very special day that we honor all those men and women that have served this country and fought for the freedom we enjoy. I apologize for not being here. I was actually out of town with my wife, but I did attend the ceremony down in Fort Lauderdale yesterday morning, which I have to say was very somber. It was a beautiful ceremony, but nowhere near what we have in, in the bicentennial park here every year. But Peter, I, I thank you for attending and speaking on my behalf. It was, it was a day that we, we honor, you know, each year and I certainly will make sure next year my flight is the day before and I will be back in town. The only other comment I, I want to comment on is the election. Again, I want to thank the, the public, the voters, everyone that came out and supported us, you know, Tim McDonald is here in the back. Myself and Tim will be sworn back in on the committee here on January first and I look forward to working with Tim. Mark and I have been together twelve years and, and, you know, he certainly will leave a void when he leaves and, you know, we'll talk about that more as we get towards the end. But it, it is, it is something that's, you know, when you put yourself out there to run for public office, it is something that you really have to be ready for. It's, it's changed drastically over the years. I've been involved. You, you used to have to go out and put an end to paper and get your message out. Now, you know, Peter could trip on the steps going down, the front steps here at the end of the meeting, he'll be on Facebook within ten minutes.
Gee, thanks a lot, right?
Thank you.
Not, not to wish bad on you. You know, we, we live in different times and it's, it's hard to get, you know, people to step up and do it. But I, I want to, you know, thank Mrs. Dela Cruz. I've served with Helen. She's a wonderful lady for stepping up and running again, or running mate Mike Dos Santos, who's somebody new. I've, I've just met recently over the last couple of months, but a nice young gentleman. I think he's got a bright future. Mr. Panza and Mr. Bender, of course, you know, running again this year. And then I, I want to congratulate Rob Claus and Dave Salati, you know, because they are new people, they're bringing new ideas to the Board of Education. I wish them the best and I hope that the, you know, the board has a very successful year moving forward next year. To Gary Vicaro and Jim Latelier, again, thanks for, you know, stepping up to the plate. Each and every one of these people has, has something different to offer and I think that, like you said, that they should stay involved in, in the public eye in some capacity, one way or the other. I do appreciate everybody's support and I, I look forward to your serving with the majority of people sitting up here for the next three years. Having said that, I will now open the floor to public comment. Mr. Moss?
Thank you. My first comment is just going to be on the bills. Of the five million, four hundred and thirteen thousand that we paid, that the bill we're total, just the people realize that three million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand of that is going to the county for the taxes, which is more than we pay here for local taxes. Second thing I wanted to say is, it's an honor for me to be here tonight that you give Mr. Parker the job as the town historian. I just want to tell you something that happened with me, with Mr. Parker. I played the pirate at the beach opening for a couple of years and I met Mr. Parker one time and he said to me, "If you're going to be a pirate, you got to know where the lakes are in town." Well, after being here forty years, I thought I knew where lakes were. And he tells me about Lake Laurel. I said, "What do you mean, Lake Laurel?" He says, "Well, Lake Laurel was here for a long time before they changed the name of it to Lake Barnigan." And he said, "You also have to know where Lake Ramsey is." I said, "I've never heard of Lake Ramsey." He says, "Well, it's right in the middle of town. Everybody should know where Lake Ramsey is." Does everybody know where Lake Ramsey is in the middle of Lacy Township, right here in the city? Very tricky question, correct? Mr. Parker knows. I tell you, when you're looking at the mill pond, you see the railroad right away? The other side of the tracks is Lake Ramsey. The other side is Mill Pond Lake. Mr. Parker was probably the only one in town that really remembered that from fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. So he does know a lot about this town. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick?
Hi, everybody.
How you doing?
Expaltro, Seabreeze Community. I understand that garbage and recycling is up for legal sale?
Yes, we open the bids next Friday on the twentieth.
I just want to, you know, complimentary to the company that presently does the work, can speak for the Seabreeze Community, do a great job. Courteous, respectful, friendly, neat, safe, pick up your cans, put them right back on the curb. So I, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll be the selected vendor again. They do a great job and I've had experience.
Other ones, yeah, yeah. They've been our, our vendor in two contracts now and, you know, they've been very, very good to us.
Yeah, yeah, so great job there.
Yeah, thanks, Nick.
Sure. Thank you.
Hi, Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. Pleased to be back.
How you doing, Tony?
I know you all did miss me a lot, but I'm back now. And I wanted to say, I wanted to start out, I have a lot of things to say because I've been marching for three years. First thing is I want to say thank you. It all started saying thank you when Mr. Dykoff was mayor. And I said to him, "You better put a cop at the end of the road to limit who comes down here because there's going to be looting." And he immediately reacted as mayor and stationed somebody on Sunrise Boulevard and stopped anybody who wasn't a resident from going down here and took care of us as residents who couldn't get in our homes at the time. Our stuff was there, couldn't get it out. We couldn't be there. But he took action as mayor of town, even though it was reactionary because you can't plan for something like that. And it just shows the type of people we have leading us here in town. So I want to say thank you, which is very unusual for me to say. Anyway. After being away for three years and going through this whole process with Sandy, having faced federal and state bureaucracy, having faced obstacles, accusations, impediments, all these things that happen to us, I call us refugees. Okay, when you live out of a suitcase for three years, that's kind of halfway who you are. I mean, I was much more fortunate than a lot of people, but one of the things I wanted to really say thank you for more than Mayor Dykoff's action is the response of the people in this building, the people like me, okay? The building department, the building inspectors, the Mr. Curtain and the DCA organization here, the Department of Community Affairs, the tax office, Veronica, Veronica's office and her peers and her subordinates. Anytime I came in in these past three years to look for information, to look for guidance, to look for assistance, I got it. To the best of their ability, within what they had to do, they did it. Now, a lot of people may not be willing to come up here and say that because maybe they didn't have as good of an experience as I did. But having built add-on odd in other communities, having gone through building projects and things like that, I know there's limitations. I know you can only do what you can do, okay? At times it was very frustrating and it's understandable that it's frustrating. We're in a very unusual situation. I mean, we are all suffering from what they call now post-traumatic stress. It's like, yeah, we're all a little nuts, okay? But the township people really did shine compared to what I had to go through with the federal government and what I had to go through with the state of New Jersey and Barack Obama. So I want to thank you and your peers and your subordinates and the people that work for us in public. They deserve that praise. Inspectors, you know, the inspectors that come out, and I've recently moved back in, I got my CO. It's a brand-new home. I'm happy as heck to have a bed of my own. They came out and they made sure that before I moved in, I was safe. They really did. I mean, they crossed the Ts and they got the Is. And a lot of people in construction, they look at that and they go, you know, they're nothing but putting up obstacles in our way. That's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is they're interested in me being safe before I move in. They're concerned about my well-being. They're concerned about the people who are going to be sleeping in that house, my children, my grandchildren. They want to be sure that when they say it's okay to move in, in fact, it's okay to move in. And they mean that because that's part of their job and their responsibility and they're going to sign off on it. And yes, there was times I was delayed. There was times that they thought I was living there, but I was there like three, four o'clock in the morning, testing lighting and all kinds of different things and things you have to do before you move in, okay? But the point still came down to that the inspectors did their job and they did it well and they did it for my well-being. And they do it for all the permanent residents that are going to be moving back and people that are just going to be moving into town. And they do it for safety's sake, so I applaud them for that. Okay. Nothing nice enough is in your seatbelt. Veronica, over three years ago, we had a discussion about different ways to raise money, about having the Lacy Bucks credit card we had to get out. The last time I came, the way we left the conversation, two things. Number one, you could pay your taxes using a credit card, but there was a fee that was charged, correct?
To, yes, to you to use the credit card.
And that's still in place, correct?
Yes, we can't pass it on overall through the municipal budget. It has to be to the user who's using the credit card.
Okay, so there's still a fee to use a credit card.
Convenience.
So if anybody wants to get extra rewards or whatever, they pay a fee and they pay that big dollar amount, whatever it was. Okay. There was a card that you said you were going to be looking into that is being, was being used, my memory serves me correctly, this is like four years ago, Marlboro.
Yes, and that, but that wasn't for the municipality to make money.
That was to raise money for, and what it was dedicated, I believe, was for EMS services and other volunteer services that were in the town, like fire, rescue.
It was the Rotary Clubs, the Elks Lodge, yeah, all of that. And yeah, there was a card to do that. But you had to be a member of that organization for your points or that dollar amount to go to that organization. So for example, for my, if I wasn't a member of the EMS, the money that I was spending in that fee the EMS would get, wouldn't get it unless I was a member of that organization. I looked into it and that's what that was, so.
Okay, so the township couldn't utilize that type of a system to raise additional donated dollars.
No, no.
Us to be, okay. So, and I believe that's, that's what you said.
So I had looked into it afterwards.
I challenged myself to go out and find some.
Because it was a town in North Jersey you told me about as well.
Ulsbourn.
Mm-hmm.
Ulsbourn raises a bunch of bucks, okay? They call it Ulsbourn dollars, you could call it Lacy Bucks, you can call it anything you want. But they use a system called the W-W-W property tax card dot com. And what I thought I would do is, I have.
Marlboro does it.
Yes, Marlboro does it as well. We just, we just looked into this if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we just did, uh, two or three months ago. Peter and I.
You, you know that?
Yeah.
Okay. And have you, have you, um, oh my.
What, you, you would have to research that.
Right.
Give him one.
I will let the attorney speak because she has researched this.
Yeah, I'd like to know what's, if it's being done by another township in the Old Republicans in Somerset County.
Yes. It couldn't be done here. It, it's not that it couldn't be done. It could be done. I know that when I looked, I looked into it for Berkeley Township and at the time, there were issues with, they, they wanted basically the ability to utilize the township's records and so forth and have access to them. And the way it was set up, the town didn't feel comfortable with allowing all of that access. I think there have been some changes that have been made and they were supposed to present them. I don't know if they have yet. But at the time, it was just going to, you would be giving this company access to, full access to certain tax records, which you would never allow anybody access to that. And like I said, that was the problem at the time. I don't know if things. I don't know if things have changed since then.
And how long ago was that?
Just in the six months, if I'm not mistaken. Was it this year?
Yeah, it was this year.
15, it was in 15.
Yeah, the end of, well, I think I looked at it the end of last year.
14, okay.
Right, but then you guys were presented it with it then.
Because Monica was looking at it too.
Right, right. I know that that was the concern, and it was the CFO who really had a concern there. And it was based on the software and the access to the software.
So actually, it's dependent upon the attitude and the way the Township Committee feels about utilizing this kind of thing, whether they want to let access go. So I don't want an answer. I'm only saying that it has been used. There is a plethora, okay, of businesses that use the system. The town does generate.
And also, what it was with this is that, yes, you would go to the business, you would get points or dollars for your community. The company had to pay a monthly registration fee to the company that's hosting us. I'm going to say Property Tax Card. They had to pay a monthly fee to that company, plus pay for software and equipment from that company in order for them to be part of that program. So you'd go and spend $100 at home, and big box stores aren't going to do it. It's only going to be your mom and pops. I've already talked to them.
Mostly the small businesses in town.
So you go to, let's say, the local pizza parlor, and you spend 20 bucks there and say, a buck fifty, $2 is going back to the town. Well, you know, they're also losing that fee, because they have to pay a monthly fee to maintain this Property Tax Card program, because they want to help out the community, plus pay for the equipment, you know? So that was one of the other things that kind of turned us off, is that, you know, the big box stores, where a lot of the money's being spent, won't participate, and the mom and pops are already struggling.
Okay, because I did forward this also to the local Chamber of Commerce. And I had thought that if the local Chamber of Commerce, or sometime down the road, this Township Committee looks to develop some kind of an economic committee, okay? Economic Development Committee.
We have one.
Give it over to them to take more of an active look or active role. Perhaps somewhere down the road, and in the future, we can look for a way to generate some income.
There is a member of the chamber that sits on our Economic Development Committee. It's required by statute.
Just to give it another look, that perhaps there'd be a way to generate some income for our EMS services.
But talking to some of the small, just talking to some of the small businesses, they did not want to, you know, have to take a cut of their revenue that they're making from our sales and give it back to the town and, you know, pay for a monthly service fee, plus the equipment that they would have to pay for, and they were at the mercy of this company.
Okay, I don't know how much it is.
I forget how much it was too, but again, but it was, it was nothing that was benefiting them. It was nothing that was benefiting the local company.
Well, it's letting people shop in town rather than go out of town. Gives them the incentive to stay in town and spend their money right here where they live, rather than going to Berkeley, or rather than going to Waretown, or rather than going somewhere else. I mean, we have, you know, shopping centers right here, and we have small businesses right here, all up on Route 9, that, you know, might be able to really benefit from spending those dollars here. We have, you know, we have our local hardware store building a brand-new building right on Route 9, so you must be doing pretty good to be able to expand like that. So maybe there might be some other interest. I'm just saying, keep an open mind with it. This is an avenue, this is a venue, this is a way to do it, and I'm bringing it forward for you to peruse. When it comes to trying to make money, I mean, that's what the township should do, is try to, wait. It says here that by running local government like a small business and eliminating waste, what it doesn't say, and Mr. Quinn, is generate revenue. A small business, not only doing these things, has to generate revenue to be successful. When it comes to generating revenue, there's many, many ways a county can generate revenue. And as I said before, and you all shook your head going like this, we're all concerned about safety, aren't we? We're all concerned, the way to generate revenue is through certificates of occupancy. We have affordable housing coming into this township for the first time. That's rental property. You have a new rental agreement, you should have a certificate of occupancy paid to the township before the new tenant moves in. You should know who moves in, should have a record of who moves in, and make sure that the place is safe before they move in. You generate revenue that way. Some of our biggest taxpayers in town are multiple property owners, who are landlords. Many times, these people end up on the tax list of not being up to date on paying their taxes. They're still very big property owners. Every time they have a new tenant come in, we should have concern of all our permanent residents that they're moving into a safe place by making them apply for a certificate of occupancy to make sure that the fire codes are being met, to make sure that the building is safe, to make sure the people who are moving in there, that we know who they are, because they're going to be bringing kids that are going to be attending our schools at $17,000 a pop.
They do have to register who their tenants are.
Through the Affordable Housing Program.
Well, through any program. If there's a rental here now in town that's market rate, they have to register that they rent it and who their tenants are.
Okay.
So they do that.
Okay, and do we inspect them before?
No, we don't have an inspection program. That's something that the town has looked into several times since 1992, and it wasn't cost-effective.
So by choice?
Because you have to hire other staff.
Right, you don't, with affordable housing coming in, and once the units are opened up, all this additional rental property, you don't think it'll justify part-time CEO, part-time investigation?
We've looked at the salary that we would have to justify if we were taking from the CO when it's in place, and it's not going to justify. Once, you got to remember, when we hire somebody initially, if you're hiring somebody, the salary is $60,000, within a 10-year period, you're talking about $90,000, $100,000 plus a $30,000 benefit package. It just gets to the point where it's so far out of reach to be able to cover the costs of those single inspections on units.
Are all our inspectors now full-time with benefits, or some part-time?
Now, we still have our main inspectors full-time, and our secondary inspectors are all part-time. We have part-time electric, part-time plumbing, and part-time fire.
So we could expand the part-time force?
Yes and no. Because of Obamacare the way it is now, once you go past a certain number of hours, you automatically have to give them that $33,000 benefit package.
Keep them under 30 hours, just let them use COs.
It's not, it's not all about keeping them under 30 hours. It's an aggregate over time. There's a whole trend and analysis that you have to do with the Affordable Care Act, and who has to be offered benefits if they're trending towards it.
We would have to keep firing, letting them go and bringing out a different batch of people. But we do have a program in effect, which I'm sure you're aware of, where when you transfer title, you have, you come in and get a letter, and we identify a letter of no interest, what's still open. If there's permits open on the house, everything has to be satisfied so that you, as the new buyer, is not inheriting somebody else's problems or something that was built without permits below notice lines. We do justify all that. The low and moderate income housing is very, very different, because it's controlled drastically different at the state level, as well as by the property owner, which in this case would be Walters Homes. Walters Homes has very specific guidelines that they have to take and follow because of the funding that's put in place when they take and build these projects. So that's a completely separate entity versus what you're talking about.
No, I understand that, but the township also has to keep track of it.
Who's moving into the units?
Under ordinance 2006-27, the principal tax clerk recording of rental statements, under that particular ordinance, and it's your ordinance, you have to know who's moving in, correct?
Correct. Do you let them go in here and file a form?
But the affordable housing unit is over 100 units, and it goes directly to the state. It does not come to town.
100 units of COs every time it changes, changes hands. That's a lot of money. That's my point. It's going to grow, it's going to double, it's going to triple. And the number of kids we're going to have is going to grow like crazy, and that $17,000 a pop. I have no problem, I said this at the Board of Education meeting, I have no problem educating any kid that is legally in town. I got a real problem educating someone who's not legally in town.
I understand it.
And if you can tie your database with rental units and permanents.
We're not allowed to do that. We've already been through this conversation, and we've checked. We're not allowed to do that and share that information between the schools and us, and the schools cannot.
The schools have to educate whoever comes into town.
I understand that. They have to, they have to find out who they are, where they live, okay, and that they're here legally.
Right.
Okay?
Well, no, not necessarily.
They're here, that they're paying rent, they have a lease.
Within a town, that they're, they're living in town legally, not that they're in this country legally, because that's not something.
All right, so you're saying to me that if the school does that, they have no one to check with except the landlord?
Well, if the school, my understanding is the school has to provide some sort of documentation showing that the family is living in a dwelling in the community. We have something on record that when you're a landlord, you have to come in and file paperwork every time you switch a tenant. It identifies, you know, the landlord, it identifies the tenant, and we keep track of that information.
And how does the school verify that that's illegal, that that resident has given them a valid lease?
But that's sent through the schools. They can't, they can't come to the town and ask the town for information. We can't provide that.
So it would only be through the landlord?
No, it would be through the information that the tenant or the individual who's putting their children through the schools to supply them with information, whether it's a utility bill, driver's license, you know, a lease contract, or something like that.
My concerns are, you have one person who takes up the lease. They're married, they have three kids, okay? They have three kids coming to the school. Next thing you know, they have six nieces and nephews, all living in that address. They really don't live in that address.
But they don't have to, see, what happens is, is when you, the landlord, comes and files the rental receipt, you're giving me who the adult tenants are. You're not listing the children, and I'm not seeing a lease agreement with all the children, because it's not required by law.
But you do have a name.
Of who the adults are, or indeed, the adults in the household.
So if the school does a search, and they have three names under one address, that's a red flag, correct?
Not really.
But they don't come to us and ask us.
Well, you're in a situation now, especially in the last five or six years, where a lot of people have moved back into town and are living with their parents. Names are different, but they're still legally entitled to live in that house with their parents. If they're living in that house with their parents, they're certainly entitled to send their kids to the schools. That's the way the system is set up. I understand what you're saying and, you know, what you're trying to divert, but the schools have an obligation to educate any child that comes into Lacy Township.
I'm just looking for any way to generate more money.
I totally agree with you, but you have to look at, from our standpoint, our best way to generate income is to go out and find, you know, revenue in a way of ratables, jobs, convenience for the residents, which we, you know, when Mark and I joined the committee, you know, 12 years ago, we had no Home Depot, we had no Walmart, we had no Kohl's, we had none of these things. We've brought in every single one of these items, and, you know, we've reached the point, we're not looking at big box stores to move up and down Lacy Road or Route 9. We've done what we wanted to do as far as that goes. We want to now find other ways for our commercial people that are in town to generate more revenue, to increase the values of their properties. We've changed zoning, we've changed allowing just a single retail to allowing single, you know, split use. You can have residential retail. Those are ways to generate additional revenues that we have a tremendous amount of ability to work towards. We're very, very, you know, customer-friendly when it comes to, you know, these people coming into town. Not giving them a pass, they're going to take and build according to the guidelines and the codes and everything that we require. But we will certainly work with them and try and get them through the process to be able to create more jobs.
Well, I'm a great believer, when you got lemons and you got water, you make lemonade. I mean, when it comes to affordable housing, and it's something we have to do, okay? Can we make lemonade, okay? For example, White Castle, which brings me to the next subject, okay? I don't like White Castle. I think it's okay. I mean, we went, we had a discussion about it, we asked them to limit their hours. We asked them to limit when they were going to make deliveries, not to disturb the residents. The only thing we couldn't limit is people coming in after every bar up and down on Route 9 is closed, and they're going to come here to eat. That we couldn't limit.
We tried to.
I know that.
They sued us.
I understand that. But, as I said, once every bar is closed and they come here to eat, and we could generate great opportunity, great planning, I appreciate everything you've done, okay? I think it's good, because every drunk who pulls in and pulls out should get stopped, fined, and end up in municipal court and raise the money that way, okay? Mama told you not to come, you're here, pay the bills. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Mrs. Rizoli. Good to see you. Anyone else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
All in favor? Thanks, folks.